Good evening and welcome to the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three Regular Board of Education Meeting. We'll start with a roll call from Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta, here. Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Mrs. Sully.
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Nickram.
Here. All right, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can stand up for this one.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and as is customary to every board meeting, we start off by reading the Vision and Mission Statement. Our Vision Statement reads Achieving Distinction in All That We Do, while the Mission Statement reads Cultivate an Inclusive High-Performing Culture of Growth and Community. All right, moving on here to Item Two. We do not have any comments from the audience on agenda and non-agenda items. There is, if you look in your board packet, board members, there is some content there for you to review at your convenience if you have not already. All right, moving on to the Consent Agenda, Dr. Abbott.
Yes, as we're aware, Robert's Rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items had been provided to all board members in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening you have Item A, Minutes of the May eighteen, two thousand twenty-three Regular Board Meeting. Item B, Personnel, which includes the board approving the following appointments, transfers, and resignations. A resignation from, excuse me, effective at the beginning of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, the following hires: Gina Polito, one point oh FTE math teacher at Fort Atkinson High School; Sarah Young, one point oh FTE special education teacher at Purdy Elementary School; and Alexandra Kopecky, one point oh FTE agriculture teacher at Fort Atkinson Middle and High School. Also, please accept the resignation requests effective at the end of the twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three school year: Jenna Fechner, one point oh FTE general music teacher at Berry Elementary School; and Susan Belzer, one point oh FTE art teacher at Rockwell Elementary School. Item C, the intra-fund payment of the General Fund, Fund Ten, to the Post-Employment Benefits Trust, Fund Seventy-three. Item D, Board Policy Thirty-two point one, the update. That is the first read, as the board will remember. Item E, Gifts to the School District, which includes the following: a donation from Shelby Johnson, Finley Kidd, Macy Spies, LOD Thies, Kinsey Wallen, all Luther Elementary fifth grade students who raised three hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-five cents by holding a mini grant bake sale. The donation is put towards the purchase of the Luther Elementary Playground equipment. And certainly, the board would like to thank Shelby, Finley, Macy, LOD, and Kinsey for their generous donation. Item F, Budget Transfer Requests, and then Item G, Payment of District Bills and the Treasurer's Report.
All righty, thank you, Dr. Abbott. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any board members would like to pull out and further discuss?
So I do want to pull out the Item B, and I just want to make it, I just want to discuss that and make it clear why we are filling three positions. These were three positions that were already open, is that right? The math teacher, special education, and ag teacher?
They were positions that became open after other, I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
After resignations. They were, they were positions that were deemed were not going to be.
Oh, yes, they were positions, they were additional resignations after we made the staffing adjustments earlier this spring. I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you're asking.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I kind of threw you, threw you that one. I just wanted to make that very clear. I mean, coming off of non-renewals, I don't want it to, you know, appear that, oh, it's just, you know, business is normal, and now we're filling these positions that were not renewed. These are positions that were additional resignations that were not.
Yeah, and I think as, as the board and hopefully the community remembers, as we're moving through that reduction process, we assured everyone that as additional positions became available, we would look for additional attrition opportunities should they be available, but also in our efforts to maintain programming and servicing for kids, even with those reductions, that we cannot attrition every position that becomes available. These are three great examples, and thank you for pointing that out of, of such a need for us to continue offering the goods and services that we have for students next year.
Okay, thanks. So I'll move to approve the Consent Agenda.
And then we'll go on.
And then we'll do the next question.
Second.
All right, motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Mr. Rogers, and a roll call, please, from Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, and now we're, since the Personnel Item B was pulled out, we'll have a separate motion for that.
Now I'll move to approve Consent Agenda Item Three B for Personnel Appointment, Resignation, Retirement, and Transfer Requests.
And I'll second that again.
All right, a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Rogers, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving on to Item Four, Instruction.
Yes, as the board will recall, we were pleased that you approved two of the new courses at Fort Atkinson High School for next year, an Advanced Placement Precalc- Calculus course and as well as a, an Advanced Placement Human Geography course. With those new courses comes required materials. Mrs. Oakley, our Director of Instruction, has prepared the necessary reports and gone through the necessary process to reach the determination of the materials that are listed in your agenda there for you. So you will see a Precalculus with Calc Chat and Calc View, the eleven edition, and then also the Human Geography for the AP Course. We are seeking the board's approval for offering those courses this fall.
Are they separate resolutions?
They are, they are one.
Be it resolved that the following textbooks be removed from the table and adopted for use in the School District of Fort Atkinson. Title: Mystery Science, Publisher: Discovery Education. Address: Forty-three fifty Congress Street. I'm not great sure what STE means. Seven hundred Charlotte, North Carolina. Two eight two oh nine dash four nine five three. Publication year: Established in two thousand fourteen. Web-based, updated, and enhanced annually for use in elementary science grades five through, grades K through five.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Bookta, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. And we do have another motion there.
Yes, be it resolved that the following textbooks be placed on the table and considered at the July Board Meeting: Precalculus and Calc Chat and Calc View with the rest of the information as written, Human Geography for the AP Course, and with the rest of the information as written.
Second. Oh, go ahead.
I can second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Sully, a second from Ms. Bookta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. All righty, moving on, non-instruction part of the board meeting this evening.
Yes, Item A is the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four School Resource Officer, or SRO, the Intergovernmental Agreement. Three years ago, the board entered into agreement with the Fort Atkinson Police Department through the city of Fort Atkinson, by which the School District of Fort Atkinson pays for half of the actual costs of the SRO. And as you know from reviewing that contract, that provides the district a dedicated officer and a number of guaranteed services with that arrangement. We had a three-year agreement that was due this year. I did ask for a one-year agreement, just as we were working around the referendum time when this contract came due, and they were good enough to provide this one-year agreement for your consideration this evening. Please be very, very clear that we have been incredibly fortunate to have had excellent school resource officers, and we very much appreciate the continued relationship with the city and Fort Atkinson Police Department.
Can you give us any information on the costs?
Yes, so for all three years, it was just short of fifty thousand dollars. So one year, two of the years were right around forty-eight thousand, another was around forty-seven thousand.
And for the one year going forward?
We anticipated it to be similar.
Okay. Then be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the School Resource Officer, SRO, Intergovernmental Agreement for Services from July first, two thousand twenty-three, to July, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. I saw both.
I'll second.
I'll make a decision, I'll make a decision there. We have a motion by Mr. Rogers, I believe a second by Ms. Sully, or I do believe, it is a second by Ms. Sully. And a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving on to breakfast and lunch price increases.
Yes, for the first time in several years, we are of a need to increase meal prices for hot lunch and breakfast, beginning in the fall. We are asking for a ten cent increase across the board, which I very much appreciate our Nutrition and Services team keeping costs as low as they are for that increase to be as small as it is. The board might recall that milk prices were increased in the winter or early, early spring as that contract became new. So this is, again, related specifically to the meal prices for next year.
And these increases are on a daily basis?
Yes, per, per meal served.
So milk prices and meal prices are two separate?
They are.
Separate contracts, separate, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate being able to keep the prices of where they're at right now. Ten cent is, is far cheaper than what I, what I had anticipated. So I, I think this is obviously the right move here of keeping our costs down while, you know, combating some of the inflation costs that we have in, having the food. So a ten cent price increase, although, like, understandably, like, we don't want, we'd rather not increase these. I think it makes sense, obviously, here, so.
As a hobby, I sometimes review other board agendas, and I think our ten cent increase is in very good stead compared to some other increases in other districts. So again, thanks to all involved in helping keep those costs where they are.
And you said it's been several years since we've increased the price. And does this, this doesn't have anything to do with free and reduced lunch?
It does not, because that is a reimbursement. So again, we encourage as many families as possible to engage in the freer reduced meals. You know, that's certainly an excellent benefit to those families, and eligibility qualifications do change from time to time. So we're continually asking people to, to consider making that application, particularly at the secondary level. Participation in that program does drop off, not just for us, but in general, and that is a way to make sure that we have all kids with an available meal during the day.
And free and reduced lunch is something that has to be applied for every, each year?
It does.
It's not something that just continues on.
Right, and it's an integrated process as part of our registration, and then there are reminders throughout the year as well.
All right, so be it resolved that the following breakfast and lunch prices be increased effective July first, two thousand twenty-three. Elementary breakfast from a dollar sixty to a dollar seventy. Elementary lunch from two dollars eighty cents to two dollars ninety cents. Middle and high school breakfast from a dollar eighty to a dollar ninety. Middle and high school lunch from three dollars to three dollars ten cents. Adult breakfast from two six, two dollars sixty cents to two dollars seventy cents. And adult lunch from four dollars sixty-five cents to four dollars seventy-five cents.
I'll second.
All right, a motion by Ms. Sully, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving on to Item C is the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four Preliminary Budget.
Yes, please welcome to the podium for the final time. Jason Demerath, our illustrious Director of Business Services.
Thank you, thanks. This evening, I'll provide the first look at the twenty-three, twenty-four Preliminary Budget. There's no action needed this evening by the board. The action to approve a preliminary budget will be taken at the July meeting.
We're doing this on purpose, so it's kind of like a final test.
Oh, there we go. All right, each year we have a similar timeline based on when the budget might be due according to state statutes. However, throughout the year, we have administrative team meetings that focus on both short and long-term budget strategy, as well as academics and our strategic plan. Our annual budget process begins with the presentation of the long-range financial projection at the December or January Board Meeting. This past April, we had an unsuccessful operational referendum resulting in the need for budget reductions. And this evening, I'm presenting the first draft of the preliminary budget, and the second draft will be presented next month. That draft will need to be approved by the board to be presented at the Annual Meeting of Electors in August. Finally, by the end of October, after we know state aid numbers, the board approves a final budget and tax levy. This graphic illustrates where our fund balance stood at the beginning of this year and where it would have been at the end of twenty-three, twenty-four had we not made the additional two point one million dollars in budget reductions. As is highlighted here, with no additional cuts at the end of next year, our fund balance would have been just around, just under eight point three million dollars, or one point seven million dollars short of that ten million dollar mark needed to avoid short-term borrowing. With regards to the fund balance I just mentioned, the question is often asked how large of a fund balance is recommended. What is shown here is the answer to that question on the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's website. What's highlighted is where it states an amount sufficient that short-term borrowing for cash flow would, could be avoided and would also allow the district to set aside sufficient assets to realize its longer-range goals. The short-term borrowing comes in based on the cash flow issues throughout the year. Locally, in order to avoid short-term borrowing, our fund balance at the end of the year would need to be in the ten million dollar range. This was what the board gravitated towards in considering how much to cut following the unsuccessful referendum. The board may recall a similar slide from various presentations over the past couple of years. These were the strategies that the Board of Education asked us to use to meet the strategic priorities as we considered budget decisions and impacts. One item I want to specifically address is the first strategy. This strategy has been a focus and challenge for the past two years as inflation has been rising. Our overarching strategy in our work has been to preserve compensation and benefit packages for our employees to ensure we are competitive and attracting and retaining high-quality team members to serve the children and families of Fort Atkinson. As we shared in April, it's an intentional strategy not to freeze or reduce salaries and benefits to avoid layoffs. What to do with compensation for the upcoming year is still a determination the board needs to make and will affect the upcoming year's budget and next year's referendum. I'll discuss this a bit more near the end of the presentation. Just to recap, the cuts that were made to create this preliminary budget for next year, it began over a year ago by attritioning and restructuring, restructuring some positions coming into the current year. We attritioned seven full-time positions across the district totaling nearly five hundred and forty thousand dollars in savings. In addition, as a result of the failed referendum, these cuts for twenty-three, twenty-four were shared with the board on April sixth as we looked to take advantage of known retirements and resignations through attrition and restructuring. We were able to cut sixteen and a half positions across our district totaling an estimated annual recurring savings of one point two million dollars. We were then asked by the board to cut more for twenty-three, twenty-four so that we, so that the budget for next year would leave us in a place not to short-term borrow going into twenty-four, twenty-five. In making those cuts, we had three more overarching strategies specific to how we considered what those cuts might be. As a result, the budget cuts that were brought before the board in April were framed on these three additional strategies. Remain a comprehensive school district and continue to grow. Focus on recurring expenses, not one-time expenses. And balance student, school, staff impacts with the community's requirement for efficiencies. As these strategies were utilized, the administrative team in alignment with our mission and vision brought forward a package of cuts in attempts to keep all opportunities, programs, and services in place for our learners. Fort Atkinson's kids are the sole reasons our schools exist. What is shown here were the additional cuts for next year brought forward at the April Board Meeting. These cuts included over twenty-one full-time equivalent positions totaling approximately two point one million dollars. Some of these reductions were addressed through retirements, attritions, and reassignments. But these cuts included sixteen certified staff non-renewals, as well as additional support staff layoffs. You're all familiar with this graph showing our future deficits that we have been working to manage through these various cuts. With the additional two point one million dollars in cuts for next year, we were projecting a deficit of, in twenty-three, twenty-four, of three point one million dollars. As I mentioned in April, even with cutting over forty-five positions totaling more than three point eight million dollars over the past twelve months, we're still looking at a deficit of three point one million dollars next year and over five million the following year. One of the main factors in the deficits we're facing is the lack of increases in revenue allowed by the state. You can see here that only once in the last decade have those increases been more than two hundred dollars per student, which is less than two percent, in a, less than a two percent increase in our revenue. In the projections we used throughout planning the cuts in the preliminary budget, I'll now share, we built in two hundred dollars per student in an allowable revenue increase for next year. We recently heard of a state budget deal that may come forward that may be more than the two hundred dollars per student, but the specifics related to that deal are not yet known enough to build them into this budget tonight. Hopefully, by next month, we'll have a clearer picture of their impact. What's shown here are the various sources of our operational funding and what proportion each of them makes up. You can see the largest two chunks are general, are state general aid and local taxes, followed by other state aid. Outside of those sources are inter-district transfers, which is open enrollment funds for students attending our district, and then all other sources, which includes fees, interest earnings, federal grants, including the Esri COVID Relief Funds. Illustrating gray here are the items that are dictated by the state budget. You can see that over ninety percent of our operational revenue is dictated by the state budget through the revenue limit or aids that the state grants public schools. As I'll discuss a bit later, when over ninety percent of the district's revenue is dictated by the state budget, what is decided in the coming month or so for the twenty-three, twenty-five state biennial budget will have a huge impact on our financial future. On the expense side, there are a few main assumptions that were made at this point. They include a salary and wage increase of five percent, which as a point of reference, CPI for next year is eight percent when it comes to bargaining with a certified union. We also know that our health insurance renewal will be seven point nine percent, and then this preliminary budget includes the three point eight million in cuts that I shared earlier. On the expense side, you can see the various categories of expenses, including salaries and wages, benefits, purchase services, supplies, fees, insurance, and our transfer to our special education fund to offset the deficit in that fund due to the cost not being fully reimbursed by the state or federal government. The gray portion illustrates, illustrates the salaries and wages, salaries, wages, and benefits portion of our operational budget, which equates to over seventy-seven percent of our annual expenses. This illustrates the reasoning behind why positions had to be eliminated to make enough recurring cuts following an unsuccessful referendum. The next largest chunk of the pie is purchase services. But within that are expenses that are necessary, such as utilities, busing, open enrollment payments for students attending elsewhere, contracted substitute teachers, and private school voucher payments, all of which account for about five point eight million of the seven point three million dollars in this slice of the pie. Now let's take a look at how all of the decisions over the past several months have played out in the form of our preliminary budget for next year. You can see that because of the unsuccessful operational referendum, our general fund revenue decreases by twelve point seven three percent. On the expense side, our general fund expenditures are decreasing by over three point one million dollars, or seven point two two percent. As a result, this, this preliminary budget has a deficit of just over three point two million dollars. So this ends up being very close to the three point one million dollar deficit we were projecting after we made the cuts this spring in an effort to maintain a fund balance of around ten million dollars. Should the deficit match this three point two million that's budgeted within this preliminary budget, our fund balance at the end of next June would be ten point one million, thus hitting our intended target for an ending fund balance to be in the range to avoid cash flow borrowing. In looking at the projected tax levy as part of this budget, because of so many uncertainties at this point related to the state budget, we're simply budgeting to keep the tax levy exactly the same as this year. With the unsuccessful operational referendum, our general fund tax levy decreases by twenty-seven point one seven percent, and our non-referendum debt for our high school energy project stays essentially the same as the current year. This leaves the referendum debt as a place to fill the gap to keep the tax levy exactly the same as the current year. At this point, our tax levy for debt would be ten point two million, but that's simply a placeholder for this preliminary budget presentation. As we learn more about what will come in the state budget, these numbers will likely change for next month. As you can see at the bottom, should the tax levy remain exactly the same, with a slight projected increase in property values, the tax rate decreases by nearly three percent. In looking at our tax rate history, this would be one of the lowest tax rates in the past decade, with only twenty-seventeen, eighteen, and twenty-eighteen, nineteen being lower. Again, this is likely to change with next month's budget presentation after more is known about the pending state budget deal. So moving forward, hopefully, we'll end up with finalized state budget within the next few weeks. From there, we get our state aid estimate on July first, and then next, at next month's board meeting, the board would approve a preliminary budget that goes to the Annual Meeting on August seventeenth. On September fifteenth, we have our September pupil count, which then dictates our state aid that's certified on October fifteenth. And by November first, then, the board determines the tax levy that gets sent to municipalities. Given that our financial needs are not going away and based on what we're hearing about the budget deal, we do not have faith that our state legislature will adequately fund public education in the upcoming biennial budget. A need to seek another operational referendum is unknown. Given state statutes, school districts are only able to ask referendum questions on regularly scheduled elections. Since there's no regular election this coming fall, the first opportunity for us to return the voters with another operational referendum question will be next spring's election cycle, with the second opportunity being the fall election cycle. Please keep in mind that districts are only allowed to ask two referendum questions within one calendar year. As such, while there are four election dates in two thousand twenty-four, the board could only have a referendum question on two of the ballots, one in the spring and one in the fall, should the first attempt fail in the spring of two thousand twenty-four. Because of so many unknowns at this point in the process, especially related to the state budget, there will be some important considerations for the board as they adopt a preliminary budget next month that would go to the Annual Meeting. The first of which is what the potential impact is of the upcoming state budget and what it would mean for the next two years. This will then dictate what might be needed in a spring two thousand twenty-four operational referendum to make it through the next three to four years. Once those factors are determined, it will be up to the board to decide how much should be levied to prepay debt to determine what the tax levy will be for the upcoming year and position the district to be successful in that spring two thousand twenty-four referendum. On the expense side, the major decision will be how close to CPI the board would like to go in order to attract and retain staff. We recently heard that Madison and a couple of other districts in the area are going to the full eight percent CPI increase. However, at this time, only a five percent increase in pay is budgeted for next year in this preliminary budget. Again, next month, the board will approve a final draft of the preliminary budget that will then go to the Annual Meeting in August. However, the final budget and tax levy are not determined until we get full state aid information in October. And then finally, any resolution for a spring referendum would need to be adopted by the Board of Education in either December or January. And that concludes my presentation of the first draft of the budget, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
When will our debt be paid off?
Right now, it's scheduled to be paid off in twenty years. If it gets prepaid, it would be paid off.
Twenty years from?
Twenty years, from when it was taken out last year. Yep.
You said that the increase in health insurance of seven point nine percent is figured in there, and that's a known?
Yep.
Known percentage. So on the expense side, the projection really of salary is probably the biggest unknown because that hasn't been finalized, and that was at five percent.
Right.
On the revenue side, though, ninety percent of that coming from state aid. Or state dictated.
State dictated, yep.
So the revenue side is completely unknown, except for just saying it is what it is from last year, plus maybe two hundred dollars.
That's what's factored in here. We, last week, there was. We, last week, there was some information released about a possible deal that had some details but didn't give full enough details for us to be able to project out what that impact would be. It gave some details related to what a revenue limit increase might be, but it didn't say how that might be funded with state aid or other things related to that.
And is our pupil count in line with what our projected enrollment is in terms of we've, you know, we forecasted that enrollment is going to continue to, you know, that it's declining.
Right.
So the projected budget shows that decrease in enrollment.
Right.
So not knowing what the state aid would be, if it stayed the same as now and that $200 wasn't realized, then our debt would be even more next year in the 202324 school year.
If the $200 didn't come through yet, the deficit would be more, right?
Just the numbers that were being floated, you know, somewhat informally, would certainly not be sufficient to which a referendum would not be necessary for emphasis.
Yeah, I mean, and this, were you banging on the door? I mean, in a, in a idealistic world, what would that number be for state aid that would need to, that it would need to increase to?
We would need over the next two years between $1,200 to $1,500 per year in each of the next two years.
Per student?
Per student, $1,200 to $1,500 per student, per year. So 24, 2500 to $3,000 per student over the course of the two years to not have a deficit the next two years. Right now, what's being floated is $325.
Because with the decade of no increase, that's just what it's accumulated to, is $1,200 to $1,500 per student.
Even after making the 3.8 million in cuts.
And our only avenue for making up that debt is through referendum, is by asking the community. Or continuing to go through more staff cuts, which I think that we are at our limit without really even more significantly impacting students.
Two things, you mentioned in the last 12 months, we made how much, how many staff cuts?
3.8 million.
And how many positions total? Was it 40?
Forty, what did I say, 45 or so?
I think it was 45.
And so when we're talking about numbers of, of $200 increase, what does that, what does that equate to in our budget, $200 increase per pupil?
$200 increase per pupil is less than 2%.
And in dollars, that is?
That'd be about $450,000 in one year.
And we need 3.1 million.
We need 3.1 million and $200 is about 450,000. We need 3.1 million above and beyond the 450,000.
And we, we budgeted a 5% increase for, for, I'm trying to find it here, but a 5% increase in salaries. What, what does that, what does that equate out to for a dollar amount? Do you know off the top of your head of there?
Each, each percentage is about $250,000, so.
1.25?
Yeah, one and a quarter.
And just as a reminder, the board's earlier action to fully fund the compensation system moving forward with the, this year's data was a piece of that as well, and that was just shy of 1% of, of that five.
Right. So, so we budgeted 5%. The board already approved market adjustments and those things, which was 1% of that 5%. So there's 4% left.
So the schools that give the full 8%, do they try to make it up through cutting benefits, do you know?
Well, I think there's a lot of us wondering where the 8% is coming from in some cases, and that will be better known probably over the course of the next four or five weeks. One, one that we're aware of has been, you know, part of that is made up through changing benefits. So those additional costs to employees, you know, in a more typical cycle, you would say, is a pay reduction because it's more cost out of pocket for the employees while they're bumping the salary element up. So I, I think you'll see a variety of different, you know, manners with which districts go, go through. The other thing is, you know, at least one of the districts that I, I know quite well, passage of referendum is, is very much not a question or, or as much of a concern, you know. So I think we're all, given the staffing challenges, very aware of, of what it takes to maintain and not fall behind very rapidly when people are, are very comfortable moving to a different district for $1,000 or a couple of thousand dollars. Things have just changed that significantly even in the last handful of years. So one of the things, you know, through the difficulties that we had this spring that I think we continue to be proud of is that we haven't frozen or diminished salaries and we haven't reduced benefits because we know in order to maintain the staff that we have, we need to continue to treat them well, both in salaries and in benefits. And I guess I would point to your earlier action where we, where we hired three teachers, all of which with, with experience. So people are very much interested in coming here, and the more competitive we, we remain, the better we are for getting experienced people to augment the, the talent that we already have on hand.
And we're, we're, I mean, we haven't cut any of the benefits. We have not gone to that degree.
Correct. We did, a year ago, we switched, we stopped offering the HRA to employees and switched everybody to the HSA, but we didn't change deductibles or anything like that.
But our benefits and our salaries are competitive, not inflated to a way where we're just saying, we want to give, we want to really pad people's pockets. And we would love to, but we don't have the luxury.
No, that's certainly not the case, and that's one of the benefits that the district reaps in having this median-based compensation system is it really doesn't allow for that type of, if inflation's the right word, but it doesn't, or indulgence, that, that, that's not the case. With CPI being 8%, you know, less than that, you could make a case that you're falling behind, doesn't mean it's possible. But for districts who are going to be, you know, implementing that next year, there's definitely an advantage moving forward.
Last year, what was the increase in salaries that we gave? Was it 4%?
4.7, I believe.
And CPI last year was 7?
CPI was 4.7.
Oh, it was 4.7, okay. So we matched CPI, but now it's up to 8%.
And we're very hopeful, I mean, given the current trends, that things will come back into a little more commonplace with CPI for next year. That doesn't change where we, where we live right now.
Right. And it doesn't change the fact that everyone's being impacted by that, and so our staff are impacted by that.
And, and just, and I believe this is accurate, our earlier projections had a larger cost increase for insurance and other benefits, and it was actually, the renewal was less than we had projected. So that sort of savings or difference is already built into these projections as well. In part, that renewal that was less was because of the board's movement from the HRA to the HSA for all staff, and it really did position us to be in a much better position for renewal than a number of other area districts that are seeing renewals significantly higher than what we've had this year.
So having cut 45 staff this year, and I don't think it was all fluff, all extra people who were just sitting around not doing anything, cutting 45 staff members, still having to go to our fund balance for $3 million, is it a fair statement to say we just don't get enough money to run the district from the state?
I would agree with that statement.
Okay. That was, that was a question. Might have been a statement.
I mean, just, just commentary that we've gone over, you know, as, as I've, you know, continued in this role as a board member, you know, it astonishes me that, you know, we continue to pull rabbits out of our hat a little bit, right? We're talking a 7.9% insurance increase this year. Unless I don't remember, I don't recall what it was, but you know, we, we did some moving around there, right? And, you know, we're talking a salary increase of X percent, we don't know what that is yet. We've cut 45 positions. And, and, you know, potentially looking at maybe getting $450,000-ish, right? All of this is, is simply not adding up to me, right? And, and as an administrative, administrative team and as a school board, and, you know, I, I think we're doing the best that we possibly can, given the circumstances that we're, that we're in right now. But, you know, as, as I continue to go through this, it is, it is startling to me, to say the least, of the position that we're in right now. And this is no different than any other, than most districts in the state right now. You know, it's a money thing and, you know, and how we continue to manage this in upcoming years is going to be obviously very critical for what we, how we continue to provide services for our students. You know, this, this upcoming school year, I'm proud of the way that we've kind of been able to pull everything together and, and see very little, if any, changes to the students. I don't know what that holds in the future, right? Two, three, four, five, 10 years down the line, I don't know what that happened, I don't, I don't know where we continue to tighten the belts here or, you know, I don't know where that comes. So as, this may be rambling at this point, but, you know, it's concerning to me, to say the least, more of a commentary, right?
You also have to keep in mind that the state is sitting on a pile of surplus money, too. At least that's my understanding, and they could afford to be a little more generous.
But, I mean, we'll continue to do the good work that we do. You know, obviously, these, these increases and things that we just simply have to absorb is, is, you know, time will tell what we need to do with this here.
Jason, so like, let's say hypothetically, because everything, every, this kind of sits on decisions that are to be made in the next few weeks, there is an increase in student, per student. Would that, how would, what would happen to that, those monies? You know, is that something that would help us be more, can negotiate that CPI to get to 8%? Or is it something that the state specifically says, no, this is how you have to manage it?
It, it is, so I guess if we talk numbers, right now, we have $200 per student built into the budget. What we've heard is $325 per student, which takes our deficit from 3.1 million to 2.8 million. So it's $300,000 better, that's it. What the board decides to do is, it's all part of the general fund ten budget. So the board can decide what they want to do with it, there's no restriction on that portion of funds.
Okay. Also clarify if I'm wrong, I do believe when I had read up on this potential, what they were trying to do for schools is that there's also the, the other side of the coin of the voucher money. So what, what, what are some things that could potentially affect us with that increase?
So the voucher increases are anywhere from about 15% to 33%. And that's, that's built into that $2.8 million deficit that I talked about.
So would that increase?
So it's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars more that we're paying out in vouchers as a result of those increases.
Which would therefore pass on to our taxpayers?
Right.
I would like to say, I appreciate how you present the budget, and I appreciate how you simplify it and make it easy to understand. As much as we don't like to see these projections, I appreciate your, all your work in making this very understandable.
Thank you.
For the last time. You don't have to deal with my questions anymore.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I, before he leaves, make a motion that we thank Jason for his efforts over these many years and wish him good luck in his future endeavors?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second.
But anyway, thank you.
Let's just make sure it doesn't have a roll call category.
All righty, thank you for that, Mr. Demrath. We're moving on to items for future board meetings.
Yes, we'll have, in July and in August, we'll be looking at a strategic plan update. We'll be looking at the high school entry and city street proposal that we know is coming our way from the city. Authorization to dispose of equipment no longer useful to the district. We'll have a second read of those textbook adoptions that you gave us earlier this evening. Also, the board will be approving student handbooks. There will be several other items that are not listed here. And then with that, then you're on to your item eight.
All right, at this point, we will go, we have a motion in front of us for a closed session here.
Be resolved that the Board of Education convene in closed session as authorized under Wisconsin statute 19.851(c) to consider compensation system appeal. I saw move.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Rogers, a second by Ms. Bookta, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Bookta?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, we'll now move to.
We'll move to conference room B, which is the conference room just near the office complex.
Are we coming back into open session?